Okay, are you ready Candace?
I am ready.
Martha, are you ready? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the August 25th, 2015, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. We do have a fairly full house tonight, which is nice to see because we're used to talking around with people with like four or five people in the audience. So it's really nice to see so many citizens here for whatever the reason you're here for tonight. Just reminder that tonight's session is being recorded for broadcast on McMinnville Community Media. That's on both Comcast and Frontier. And also, we're very fortunate to have our friends at KLYC streaming this live over the Internet now. So if you can't make the meetings, most of our meetings you can dial into KLYC and watch our meetings, so we thank them for that. That being said, what we do ask is if you have a cellphone, that you actually make sure it's in silent mode. And if you do have to receive or take a call, we ask that you go out into the lobby to do it and please refrain, for the courtesy of others, refrain from either receiving or sending texts during the meeting. So that being said, what I will do then is I will go ahead and ask Councilor Rudin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance in the name of the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor. That takes us to the point now that this is a time that the council really enjoys that we ask any of the citizens that would be interested in making public comment to come forward. When you do, we ask you to state your name and your address, both for the voice record and sign in on the form, so we have it recorded on hard copy. There are a couple things, we do have a couple limitations on what you might be able to speak about. If there's an item on the agenda tonight that's already a topic of our agenda, we ask that you wait until that item comes up for business and speak at that time. If the city is currently in any matter of litigation with anybody, of course, the council cannot discuss anything in litigation or take any comments about anything that's in litigation. Anything that's what they call a quasi judicial issue or has to do such as with a land use issue, of course, we can't discuss those things. And if we know of a matter that is scheduled for a public hearing in the future, we'll ask you not to comment on that. A couple other things is that we ask that if there's several of you who want to speak on one thing, that you try to get a couple representatives to come forward and speak. And as mayor, I can limit, I've only had to do this twice, but I can limit the amount of comments we take or the time you have to speak. So that being said, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to the council that's on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Is there anybody in the, once again, is there anybody in the council come forward, please? And again, we ask you to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alex Pfeifer. I'm over on West Hills Drive. I was hoping somebody else could go before me, I'm a little nervous.
That's all right. Always a good time for first time.
All right, I think I'll sit. How much time?
Um, just, you know, I'll limit.
I don't have a lot to say.
Oh, no, I'll limit.
Just want to make sure.
If somebody gets on in five, six, seven minutes and there's others to talk, then I'll usually, I'll limit it, but.
All right. All right, earlier this summer, my friend Adam was at Joe Dancer Park. He noticed signs that were stated, "No person shall carry or display any weapon of any kind in the McMinnville Park System." Adam notified me and others via social media about this. When I saw the sign, I was very irritated, to say the least, because it was in direct violation of Oregon state statutes. Immediately, Adam, myself, and others made numerous attempts to get answers from the McMinnville Park System. We contacted them via email, phone, and even on their Facebook page, asking when they plan on correcting the signs. We thought it would have been an easy fix, quick and easy fix, that all that needed to be done was either the removal of the words with adhesive remover and a razor blade, or to cover the words up with tape. We waited days, weeks, months, no response. Instead of responding to concerned citizens and correcting the problem, someone in the Parks Department cried to the city council, I assume. Evidently, someone in the Parks Department is incapable of solving problems on their own. So they complained to the city council, and instead of the city council handing the complainant in the Parks Department a box of tissues and telling them, "This is your job, this is what you're paid to do, man up and fix it," the city council unanimously passed a new ordinance restricting the carrying of, and this is a quote, "restricting the carrying of loaded firearms in public places in pursuant to Oregon state law in declaring an emergency." End quote. So what was your excuse for your insubordinate actions for creating such a new ordinance limiting our freedoms? First off, you claim that there isn't enough time to correct the over 100 signs. Second, you claim that it's too expensive. Third, it's for the safety of children in our parks and school grounds. So according to you city council members, it's cheaper to take away our freedoms than it is to fix a sign. How dare you insult those who gave some and those that gave all for these freedoms that they have fought so hard for? Which doesn't even make any sense because the Parks Department says they plan on fixing these signs in the future. I can go on and on about statistics and examples from across our nation that prove that these feel-good laws do absolutely nothing for keeping citizens and law enforcement any safer. I can also go on and on about how this will hurt the average law-abiding citizens like myself, who either don't have a concealed license or it has expired. Under new ordinance, this new ordinance, if someone without a CHL gets caught open-carrying a loaded sidearm without any intent to hurt innocent civilians, they'll be labeled a felon by this ordinance. And correct me if I'm wrong on that. This ordinance, like SB 941, is an unjust law and we will not comply. In closing, over the years, citizens across the country have put up with more rules and more regulations regarding our Second Amendment, whether it's permission to conceal carry or universal background checks. We have compromised enough. No more compromising on our Second Amendment, period. With that being said, I'm not here to ask you to do anything. I'm here to tell you what you're going to do. First, you rescind this amendment, this new ordinance. Second, you'll remove any mentioning from the signs around the parks referring to weapons or firearms in the city parks. Lastly, I'll get to that in a second here. Real quickly, there was mentioned there was too many signs in the parks to take care of. I went to every single park and I counted every single sign that needed to be fixed. And out of the 18 parks, seven of them have signs that were needing to be corrected. Now of those seven parks, there's a total of about 19 or 20 signs out of all the parks that need to be corrected, only, that's less than 20, not, nowhere near 100. So my last thing I'd like to say is, you will not run for reelection because if you do, you will lose. And we'll make sure of that, one way or another. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
I'd like the secretary or our recording secretary, Rose, will you plead no in the record that the council received a threat tonight from this gentleman?
How so?
You said we would not, we would lose one way or another.
Whether you're voted out, recalled, whatever way we can do.
One way or another, I look at that as a verbal threat on the council.
I said the same thing to the Dundee City Council.
That's fine, I'm asking our recorder, if nothing, I'm just asking our recording secretary to put that in the record.
I apologize if it came off that way as a threat.
And that is the way it came off.
All right.
Now, first of all, will you sit there? What I'm going to do is I'm going to start, first of all, because some of the things, I even agree with some of the things you said. But as far as replacing the signs or changing the signs on the north, what I'm going to do is ask our city attorney to walk through the process and why it had to come to the council and why the city parks and recreation department just couldn't black out the signs under ordinance. So, so will you handle that, please, Candace?
I wish the Parks Director were here because I'm only going to be able to tell you what I've been told. He has said that between the various parks and the greenways and everything else, that there are between 100 and 200 signs that need to be corrected.
20.
I understand.
I know what he said, but I counted them.
Okay. And I can, as I said, I can only tell you what I've been told. I've been told there are between 100 and 200 signs that need to be changed. And yes, we could put adhesive tape over something or something like that, but I think you know very well how long that would last. So we did want to do it right, and he is committed to getting it done, and he's working on it.
Why was your solution to come up with an ordinance on ordinary citizens, innocent citizens?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Why did you come up with the new ordinance against?
We don't consider it to be against, I understand that you do.
It's against me.
I understand that you believe that, we don't believe that. And the state law allows for that, and it seemed like a logical thing to do in public places. And the council, I don't, I can't speak for the council, I thought it was a logical thing to do. And I understand that it's really made some people very unhappy and uncomfortable.
Can any of you explain to me how this ordinance will solve anything? What problem will this solve anyway? Because I didn't know there was a problem.
I don't know if the police chief would like to take that one on, but he might be the best person.
I can take it.
Yeah, Martha.
Yeah, and we, like I said, we've taken discussion on this before. Public places where there are children is not a place for where a gun is. And if we do have a gun, having the additional training that a concealed hand license gives you, or handgun license gives you, is worth it.
What kind of training do we get for a concealed license that's any different?
Basic handling. I mean, I'll pass it over to Kevin.
Do you know? You said that, so I was wondering what you think. What type of training do we get? We have to go to a class and learn about Oregon state statutes and?
I believe it's, is it a full day of training? So you do get additional training.
No.
And so for us, it was a safety issue, and you don't have, believe it or not, there are citizens that don't want to have loaded weapons in parks with their children. So that's why. We did have to change the sign, because just like you talked about before, you guys rightly did pass that we had an illegal statute on our sign. So regardless, changing the sign has no decisions on this at all. We have to change the sign. That cost was going to be sunk. Because the signs were right. The signs were incorrect, as you so rightfully put it out.
It just seems very extreme to just go this far, to even ban it to city streets, sidewalks, parks. It's not just schools and playgrounds, it's everywhere. That's ridiculous.
And that's, we appreciate.
Okay, what was the problem for this? What was the problem this solution had to be?
I'm going to say, I'm going to, for me, we've had this discussion already at publicly advertised, you know, council meeting. We talked about it there, the council passed it unanimously, and that's the current ordinance where it stands today.
What's it going to take to get rid of this now?
Question. What do they have to, if they want to get rid of it, they'd have to go with a formal request to amend the ordinance?
Yes, you could certainly write a letter to the council asking that they reconsider it, but that would be up to the council.
Because of the emergency clause, could it be overrun by an initiative?
The emergency clause actually was, was taken off of it, so there wasn't an emergency.
So there could be a petition to have it overturned through the initiative process?
Sure, you could start, you could run an initiative, that would be possible, too.
Yeah, if you can get enough signatures, you can run an initiative petition.
It originally had an emergency clause in it?
It did.
And why was that? And why was it taken off?
It was taken off because when I started to write it, the first thing I always do is write the title. I wrote the title, and I thought, we want to get this in place as soon as possible so we can start correcting the signs as soon as possible. So I thought, let's put an emergency clause on it. When I got all the way done, in order to create the reason for an emergency, there has to be something that deals with the health and safety of the public. I didn't feel that it qualified. I truly didn't. So we just made it a regular ordinance, which comes into effect 30 days after passage instead of immediately. So it was my, it was my error, I mean, I own up to it, I just forgot to reread the title after I did it. So there's no emergency clause on the ordinance as I presented it, but it did say it in the title.
Do you happen to know what ordinance number that is? It was very confusing on the website, because the ordinance that was referring to was actually marijuana ordinance.
Yeah, and I think Rose could probably give us the number, it's 92, it's 41, 47, 92? Okay.
And Matt, if you could take a minute, please, I'll have our police chief, when we pass his counsel, give us some ideas about what it was going to mean from an enforcement standpoint or not mean from an enforcement standpoint. So Matt, can you touch on that, please?
Again, from an enforcement standpoint, it is difficult.
Can you talk up just a second?
Yeah, from an enforcement standpoint, it's, it is difficult, but at the same time, if there is, like I mentioned, I think I spoke to you on the phone.
Yeah.
Is that if there is somebody that is concerned about somebody that's carrying a weapon in the parks, or anywhere for that matter in public, that we will come and assess the situation, and if the person's behavior rises to a level of the police needing to contact him, we can contact him. Again, they certainly don't need to talk to us, but at the same time, we will respond. And we will do what we can to, one, check on the situation, and two, ensure that, that you as a citizen also are not having your rights violated. So, again, it's not an easy ordinance to police, but it is something that we can at least investigate and look into, so.
Yeah, and the reason why Matt says it's, thank you, Matt, that it's hard to enforce is because you can ask anybody who's open-carrying, "Do you have a CHL?" You don't have to tell you.
Doesn't have to.
Legally, I don't have to, unless he has probable cause, I don't have a reason to say anything. Nobody does. This ordinance says nothing. So I'm just tired of compromising on this right. It ticks me off. And I saw it happen in Portland, Oregon City, Beaverton, I said, it would never happen here. Really? Now it's happening.
I can tell you, so we had really a lot of conversation around this at that city council meeting, and the police chief, he was asking pretty frank questions about what it meant from an enforcement standpoint, and whether we ever needed this, whether we didn't need it. And just to show you, the council voted unanimously, of those members present, to uphold that, knowing that it really, it really came down to the signs. And could we have put tape over the signs? Probably. Would they stay there? Definitely not. And so I think that's a catch-22 that city government is always in. We like it when citizens, such as yourself, and I'm a firm believer in the Second Amendment, too, we like when citizens, such as yourself, come and testify in front of the city council regarding issues, because the city council isn't always right. Unfortunately, we have, I could probably ask for a show of hands in this room, we'd probably have a split audience of who believes it should have been done and who believes it shouldn't have been done. So, from an elected official, that's a very difficult thing to do. I think I will just tell you, and I understand where you're coming from, because I know it's frustrating to you and others and upsets you and others, but I can tell you from my point of view, and I think I represent the city council, most of the city council, we will look at things. You can do an initiative petition, you can come and ask to have it put on the agenda, we'll look at it. But honestly, telling the city council what they won't do and asking us what we can do.
If you're not able to get rid of it, I understand, I'll go through another avenue then.
Yeah, and that's what you have to do, but, you know, we, I don't, personally, I don't like, if that's not my job, to determine whether I like it or not as the mayor. My job is to go by what we think is enforceable under the law and how it's going to affect all of our citizens in McMinnville, not a certain thing. That doesn't mean anybody on the council has to agree with the way the council votes. But if it's a council majority, it's a council majority. But I want to make sure that you understand you are welcome to bring those issues to us at any time, or, you know, we're not locked down, it's evident, and it's something that you're very passionate on. And so those kind of issues, we like it when people come talk to us instead of just going in the background. I mean, personally, as mayor, I heard things that people said that you couldn't even have a gun in your home, whether it be loaded or not loaded, that if you were seen with a, if you had your concealed carry, you're seen with a holster gun, you were going to get thrown in jail. I mean, I've gotten all sorts of comments. So I think it's a big educational process, too, because even a lot of the people that are Second Amendment believers, that hear that, they don't understand really all the rules, so. But that's all I said, you know, I don't want to belabor this any, we have any put around the council? Anything to say? If not, thank you.
I would just, I don't know if you had a chance to listen to the audio or the video of this.
I haven't had time, but I've.
I think the, somewhat of a debate around the dais that day was pretty good. I think you can get a really good understanding for why we voted the way we did, and we could rehash it now and go, it'd just take up a lot of time, but it's available, it's online, and you can see. And even the gentleman who came to speak to us, it felt to me like he came away there understanding our justification for it, and that it was, you know, in light of the full scope of it, was fairly reasonable. Not everyone will feel that way. And, you know, I, again, I appreciate you coming and showing your passion, and frankly, we need more of that. I think behind you is a lot of people are very passionate about the next item, they all came here to hear it, too, so, thanks.
All right, and then this ordinance takes into effect the 27th, I understand?
The 30 days was our last meeting on the 27th.
The 27th. And one other quick thing, you said that someone who was found carrying a loaded gun in a public place would be guilty of a felony. It's actually an unclassified misdemeanor.
Okay.
So less than $1,000, less than a year in prison.
I saw a paper circulating around, I don't know who wrote it, but it was at the sheriff's office and at the police department here, regarding the issue saying that it was a felony. So I don't.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't tell you where that came from, I haven't even seen it.
Didn't come from us.
It's not, it's not correct.
All right. Well, one more thing, though, on August, this Saturday, August 29th, we're having an open-carry family-friendly barbecue at Joe Dancer Park, and you're more than welcome to be there.
Okay, what time does that?
It's at noon.
Noon?
Yeah. Free food.
Okay.
We might get some rain, but we'll tough it out.
Okay, thanks for coming and speaking to us tonight. Okay, I'm going to ask if anybody else wants to speak, and if you're going to speak on the same subject, only bring up things that he has not already talked about. We've already heard everything he has to say, so if you bring up something else, you're more than welcome to.
Jim Densmore, I live on West Hills also.
Yeah, and sign in, please. And then state your game against you, you're on the microphone, Jim.
Jim Densmore, I live on West Hills. One thing that I haven't heard is that all of these mass shootings that we have had around the nation in the last several years have almost to an instant occurred in gun-free zones. So whenever I go into a business and I see a sign on the door, "No guns allowed," my feeling of safety vanishes. Because I know if somebody wants to come in there and start shooting the place up, I'm fair game.
And I know there's.
And did you think of that?
We have no.
When you made up this ordinance?
We have no control, we think about that kind of thing all the time, but we have no control or no oversight what private merchants, the kind of signs they want to put up, whether they're in gun-free zones, not-gun-free zones. As a city council, as a body, we can't control where a shooting, I can't guarantee a shooting would happen in a gun-free zone here, we just don't have any control over that.
That's right, but by making it a gun-free zone, you assure that no good guys with guns are going to be there if a bad guy with a gun shows up.
Sir, it's not a gun-free zone. It's not a gun-free zone, sir. If you have a concealed permit, you can carry it.
You can carry it anytime you want, anyplace you want.
The sign says, "No weapons allowed."
That's an incorrect sign.
That's why the signs are being changed.
Which is why we have to change them.
You get signed in?
Yeah. Jim, could you please, we'll have to come back and sign in. Can you sign, you need to sign the list also, please. You can come up and get ready if you'd like. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, next, and again, if you're going to speak on the same thing, we ask you to speak only on things that have not already been addressed.
I'd like to thank the council for letting us speak today, for the right of freedom of speech, one of our few constitutional rights we do have. I'd like to also speak of the Second Amendment, the right to carry arms, and I feel, just like these people here, I'm a target without one. If somebody stepped out of the bush, nobody's catching him saying, "That's against the law." His safety's in danger, my safety's in danger. Any one of these shootings that have been across the United States in the parks have not been by a mother and father sitting there watching their children. It's been other normal teenagers that have went over the deep side and pulled the trigger. But the point being is, is that lives are being saved by those carrying weapons where they need to be to pour protection. They ain't out there, these guys out here plugging triggers in on anybody. But the thing is, you need the right to protect, that's Second Amendment. I actually stepped up here for the homeless, and I'm hoping this is the last of the gun issue, but there's always NRA when our rights are stepped on. If it takes one attorney to go down by five, then bring them in. But our rights are being walked on, but I'd like to thank the council for the work they've done on the homeless issue by attending some of them places up in Portland, I heard. I commend you, and let's get on with the show.
Okay, did you sign, did you also sign?
I will sign it, yes, ma'am.
Can we get your name, please?
Yeah, your name and address again.
Mark Ritchie, 1427 Fifth Avenue, McMinnville.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we've allowed about, so far, about 30 minutes towards this, I'm going to allow one more person to speak on that issue if they'd like to speak. Is that what you'd like to speak on? Well, come on forward, and then we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Members of the council, my name's Doug Johnson. For purposes of clarifying, in my own mind, as well as the audience, do I understand correctly that the ordinance does allow for the carrying of a weapon if it is concealed and you have a concealed carry permit?
Yes, in fact, Doug, if you've got the concealed handgun license, you can carry it exposed if you'd like to, you can openly carry it.
It does not be concealed, it can be exposed if you have the license to do so.
Do I also understand correctly, or maybe not correctly, that if you have it openly shown, that it cannot be loaded? Or is that a misunderstanding?
No, that's correct. If it's, if you don't have the license, then you can't carry it loaded in a public place as defined by state law.
But if you do have the license?
If you do have the license, you can.
You can.
So if you do have the carry license, you may carry a weapon loaded or not loaded in a public place?
Yes.
And you can carry an unloaded firearm at any time.
Okay. Just for the record, city council, I would like you to know that I, as one citizen, support you in the decision you made. I feel like by allowing for the carry permit, that you have not infringed on, now this is my perspective, you've not infringed on any constitutional rights. So I just wanted to register my perspective on that, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Did you sign in and get signed in?
I did.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council on any other topic that is not on our agenda tonight?
Can I ask one question real quick?
Sure.
What's considered a loaded weapon?
I am going to.
Is it a magazine in there, is it chambered, or what?
It's, I'm going to defer this, I know nothing about firearms, so I'm going to ask Matt, who has tried to explain it to me about 80 times and I still don't understand it.
Chambered.
So it can have a magazine?
No, it can have no bullets in the weapon, period.
But if you have a concealed carry, Matt?
If you have a concealed carry, you can carry it however you like.
Okay, does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. So if.
I have more questions, but we've got to move on, I guess.
Yeah, if I don't hear from anybody else, let's go ahead and move on to our next agenda items, since nobody else has raised their hand wanting to speak. And our next agenda tonight, we have the consideration of the minutes of the June 23rd, 2015 dinner and regular meeting. Council, have you all had a chance to review your meeting, your minutes? If so, all inertation, motion is second that we approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Hill, second by Counselor Manki. All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the June 23rd, 2015 dinner. dinner and regular city council meetings passed the council unanimously. That takes us to an area we always enjoy, again, on the council of doing, and I'm gonna turn this one over to Chief Rich from the Fire Department for a certificate of appreciation. So, chief.
Is Mr. Tom Bernards here this evening? Tom, could you come up front for me, please? Mr. Mayor and councilors, the last month has been extremely rough on the state, as well as the county, as well as the city, as far as wildland fires and, and fires in general because of the nature of some of the drought and weather conditions we've been suffering. And rarely do we get the opportunity to have someone who has, has stepped up as a citizen and participated in the firefight, right alongside our firefighters in an effort to try and help save property within the city of McMinnville. And, and tonight, the Fire Department is recognizing Mr. Tom Bernards for his efforts in the fire on July 18th out at Grand Haven with the standing grain fire where we came really close to losing some properties on Lucy and Carly Drives. So, the certificate reads, "On Saturday," certificate appreciation, this certificate is hereby awarded to Tom Bernards on Saturday, July 18th, 2015. During the course of his work, Tom Bernard spotted a wildland fire near a residential neighborhood. He rushed toward the flames and using the water he had on his truck, began to fight the fire. Tom was able to slow the progress of the fire until the McMinnville Fire Department arrived. Tom then stayed and continued to battle the flames alongside the firefighters. The members of the McMinnville Fire Department wish to express our sincere appreciation for Tom's courage and selfless act. His efforts combined with his quick thinking provided outstanding support to the McMinnville Fire Department's efforts to preserve life and protect property." Tom, thank you.
I think those in attendance can see why we really enjoy doing these sorts of things. It's, it's an average, everyday citizen stepping forward that really is helping us all and benefits the whole city. So, again, Tom, thank you very, thank you very much. That will go ahead and move us on to our old business and our old business, we will have Howie, you have the floor again. We're gonna have Howie Harkema, who is gonna do a presentation, another presentation on the homeless. So, it's nice to, nice to see you again, Howie. I'd like to say, I hope since you retired, things are slowing down, but I doubt that's true.
It's not true. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for listening and to a series of meetings on the homeless condition. And thank you very much for, Martha, for having the panel discussion and upcoming panel discussion in September. So, I'd like to start by saying the little preface that I wrote, and I know that you all have it in your packet. The homeless condition in McMinnville, every person deserves a second chance. There is a constantly repeating cycle of poverty and inadequate human existence taking place throughout this nation and across the planet tonight. There are people living meagerly on the streets of McMinnville this very evening and every evening. Some live in their cars, vans, campers, trailers. Some sleep in the bushes, alleyways, on church grounds, doorsteps, the woods, parks, barns, tents, and other types of spaces. While some individuals and families are doubled up together in the same house or apartments, still others are living in a friend or relative's home or apartment, or may be couch surfing from place to place. Every one of our homeless population has been through various forms of trauma, filled with great loss, and have had some key crisis episode in their lives. Emotionally unstable and in pain, they have fallen into desperate, deep poverty, both materially, physically, and psychologically. They quickly discover that survival, anger, and fear has become their new lifestyle mantra amidst their downward spiral. Once in this homeless condition, it is almost impossible for them to get out without realistic help. Deprived of caring and support from this community, matters will remain the same for those underserved people in poverty, poverty without a home or shelter. Many are very insecure without any self-esteem or a job. Many feel less than human most of the time. Some feel like insects when looked upon from the public mindset. Many have social anxiety and no longer have the ability to interact with others well. Many are dysfunctional and so frustrated even trying to get help is a huge barrier. The homeless demographics and factors are so broad. There are seniors on fixed incomes, the working poor, individuals and families who have lost jobs. Many have lost a beloved family member or a close friend. Then there are those who have lost a home due to foreclosure or eviction. Others who have had medical emergencies, without families who have only one or no income or job, excuse me, I need to go back, who have had medical emergencies without medical insurance, single-parent families with children involved, entire families who have only one or no income or job. Most of them are living paycheck to paycheck. The most vulnerable are our children living in these extreme conditions. One out of every four children in Yamhill County live in poverty or below. The children are the largest demographic of the annual point in time homeless count, around 500 in 2014. There are also a multitude of other factors as well. These extreme challenges are so overwhelming to those living in the homeless condition. Thus, the vision and idea for the Compass Center was born, a one-stop shop for those in need of assistance, a helping hand that allows for bringing back the homeless into community holistically through a safe environment, shelter, restoration, guidance, education, training, mentorship, and counseling. We have all the right social service providers and ministries to get the job done extremely well in McMinnville and throughout Yamhill County. The problem is that these services are so spread out across the county that most people don't have any idea how to access the services needed, taking multiple days or weeks of riding the bus if they have bus fare to find and get the assistance they so desperately need. If only we could collaborate together in one space, it would solve the incredible large problem of this logistical nightmare. So, I asked the council, would you know without the internet or a phone book, how to access these services? Probably not, just like them. We, as a compassionate family community, can become rivers and reservoirs of hope and transformation. Every single person has value, importance, and potential in a family community. McMinnville and Yamhill County taxpayers would save in the long term by keeping homeless residents with health and addiction issues out of the jail and out of the emergency rooms. Connection, compassion, and caring are the three keys to success. Together, as a family community, we can make a difference in the life struggle of those barely surviving in the homeless condition in McMinnville and throughout Yamhill County. That's my preface. I realize I'm short on time, but I will fly through this as fast as I can.
I don't remember that ever stopping you before.
And it hasn't, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
My personal involvement in community, just so you have a background of what's been accomplished, I worked as the operations manager for the soup kitchen at St. Barnis, Barnabas for 7.35-plus years, from December 30th, 2007 through April 29th of 2015. There I met most of the homeless that are on our streets and that are hiding and living in different areas of Yamhill County and asked them lots of questions about what could help them. In 2008, along with Joyce Walcott, we formed what is called Love in Action. A hundred and fifty-plus service providers and ministries working together to assist each other in various ways, fundraising, offering suggestions, and to fill in the missing gaps. In 2008, 2009, before Seawish was started, pre-Seawish, I started a sheltering program with McMinnville Covenant and Salvation Army, two churches. It was called the Homeless Overflow. In 2010, city, community, and county members came together and formed Seawish, which stands for Community Winter and Clement Shelter Help. It lasts from the first day that it turns 32 degrees or lower, sometimes in October, sometimes in November, and it lasts through March 31st. So far, we have done six years of Seawish and the Homeless Overflow, and at some point downstream in this presentation, it'll break out the numbers of those sheltered. I'm also involved as a board member, vice president of McMinnville Free Clinic, a medical free clinic housed at First Baptist Church on First and Third Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for all residents of Yamhill County with no or limited insurance coverage. I can tell you that we've done 1,020 patient visits since March 2nd of 2013, and that a goodly number of our patients consider us their primary care physician because there are no openings at any physicians right now to take on new patients. And so, that's part of what I'm involved in prior. So, Oregon poverty, 2014, out of 3,831,074 people, this is the last information that has been put out. Poverty rate is 17.2 percent. 658,945 people are affected in extreme poverty, 7.9 percent. Unemployment rate was at that time, 8.4. Food insecurity was 13.6 percent. Low-income families that work, 33.9 percent. Minimum wage was 910. Percent of jobs at low wage are 15.9 percent. Percent of individuals who are uninsured, 15 percent of that total. Number of black and Hispanic children living in families where no parent has a full-time, year-round employment, 70,000 people. The state of homelessness in Oregon, and the reason I use this photograph, a child up against the wall in black and white saying, "I was here," and somebody else underneath of it painted, "I was too." Shouldn't be that way in 2015 in the United States of America. Oregon is ranked number five in the nation for homelessness according to the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty. In 2014, 20,000-plus people in Oregon were counted as being homeless. Who is homeless? People experiencing homelessness under the broad-ending homelessness advisory council definition include more than people living on the street. They include, include those who share the housing of other persons, doubling up due to loss of housing, economic hardship, personal safety, or similar reasons. They live in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or campgrounds because they lack adequate alternative housing. Live in emergency and transitional shelters. Some have been abandoned in hospitals. Some are awaiting foster care placement. Some sleep in private and public places not designed for ordinary use as a regular sleeping place by human beings. As I stated before, some live in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, bus and train stations, or similar settings. Some face impending eviction from a private dwelling unit and have not found a subsequent residence, and the person, and the person lacks the resources and support networks needed to obtain housing. Others face discharge within a week from an institution in which the person has been a resident for 30 or more consecutive days and for whom no subsequent residence has been identified, and she or he lacks the resources and support networks needed to obtain housing. Migrant children between the ages of three and 21, one qualify as a homeless when they live in the circumstances described above. Rural homelessness. About 7 percent of the homeless population lives in rural areas. Access to resources tend to be more limited in rural or mostly rural areas. Many people think of homelessness as strictly an urban phenomenon because homeless people, people are greater in number and more visible in urban areas, but homelessness is also persuasive in rural areas, as we all know. Rates of homelessness among rural areas vary widely. According to the Alliance's Geography on Homelessness Report, there are approximately 14 homeless people on average for every 10,000 people in a rural area, compared with 29 homeless people out of every 10,000 in urban areas. Between 2013 and 14, homelessness in the balance of state or statewide continuum of care, which are typically composed of multiple rural counties, declined by 5 percent according to Part 1 of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the 2014 Annual Homeless Assessment Report. The same structural factors that contribute to urban homelessness, lack of affordable housing and inadequate income, also lead to rural homelessness. Perhaps the most distinguishing factor of rural homelessness, however, is access to services, but we have the services, they're just too spread out. Unlike in urban areas, many rural homeless assistance systems lack the infrastructure to provide quick, comprehensive care to those experiencing homelessness. Reasons for this difference abound, including the lack of available, affordable housing, limited transportation methods, and the tendency for federal cover programs to focus on urban areas. Additionally, rural areas tend to have higher rates of poverty, only compounding the risk of becoming and staying homeless in those areas. Due to these barriers, one of the most important strategies in ending rural homelessness is prevention. The cost of homelessness. For many city, city officials, community leaders, and even direct service providers, it often seems that placing homeless people in the most inexpensive way to meet the basic needs of people experiencing homelessness, some may even believe that the shelters are an ideal solution. The cost of homelessness can be quite high. Hospitalization, medical treatment, incarceration, police intervention, and emergency expenses can add up quickly, making homelessness surprisingly expensive for municipalities and taxpayers. I'm not gonna bore you with the hospitalization section here. I'm gonna move on because we all know that it costs us a lot of money any time that they have to go to the, to the emergency ward, and that's why the CCOs were created. Prison and jails. People who are homeless spend more time in jail or prison, which is tremendously costly to the state and locality. Often, time served is a result of law specifically targeted, targeting the homeless population, including regulations... targeted, targeting the homeless population, including regulations against loitering, sleeping in cars, and begging. According to the University of Texas Two Years Survey of Homeless Individuals, each person costs the taxpayers $14,480 a year, primarily for overnight jail. A typical cost of a prison bed in a state, federal prison, is $20,000 per year. The state of homelessness in Yamhill County. In 2006, the county decided to create what is called the End Homelessness Ten Year Plan. This is the logo that they utilize. We also put it on baseball caps and other things so that when we do the homelessness count, that people are used to seeing it, and they don't fear that it's the sheriff's department or someone coming after them. They know that we're there to count them, not to be in fear. This is a homeless camp. These photographs were taken by Jay Jagger from the Housing Authority. Can you imagine trying to survive with your children in that kind of condition? I can't. I can't imagine what that child must feel like with that teddy bear, all muddy and mutilated, living in the muck and the mire. In 2013, at our homeless count, we counted 297 children that were homeless. Same year, we counted 469 families with a combined total of 815 persons. Eighty-two were found to be chronically homeless, meaning they're not seeking help, and they'd rather just be survivalists and left alone. And then there's those who fall off the rolls or are hiding. And one out of every four children live in poverty in Yamhill County. In 2014, 500 children were found to be homeless in Yamhill County. 602 families with a combined total of 1,211 persons were found to be homeless. 100 persons plus were found to be chronically homeless, meaning that they would like to survive on their own. 1,217 total persons were found to be homeless in Yamhill County, plus those who fell off the counts or are hiding. And still, one in every four children live in poverty. So as I stated before, pre-Sea Wish, we did 36 the first year. When Sea Wish started, the first year, 2010, 2011, we were able to shelter 192. 2011, 12, 253. 2012, 13, 242. 2013, 14, with 42 days of below 32 degrees, 537 shelterings in five churches. 2014, 15, we had 14 days of cold, and we still sheltered 285 individuals over that length of time. We had the highest amount of persons come in in 2014, 15. We had one night at First Baptist Church where they had 28 individuals all sleeping on cots. And if it wasn't for the faith-based community, and the city, and the county coming together to create Sea Wish, not unlike 2008 when two individuals died on the streets of exposure, one female, one male, there would have been many, many others. But because we all came together in collaboration, we were able to augment those figures, and not one single person in Yamhill County has died of exposure since. Now I'm going to talk about the most important factor, why I'm here. The Compass Center, which is an idea, a long-term idea, and it has great merit. And I've checked other facilities across America that they're doing similar things, and they're all very successful. Compass stands for Community Outreach at McMinnville Positive Action Sharing Sanctuary. Notice it says nothing about the homeless condition. They're all positive affirmations. And our tagline is "Growing community in a positive direction, one life at a time." So the vision is an all collaborative, meaning that we can all work together, both nonprofits, city, county, everyone, and an all-inclusive, meaning that if you're not Christian, you get to come in anyway. If you're in a partnership, you get to come in. If you're LGBTQ, you can come in. If you're living on the streets and you're drug addicted, you can come in, and we will help you get off those situations. Everyone is included. It will be a multipurpose, emergency, and transitional homeless shelter with built-in vocational job training and educational programs, also with in-house community resource providers having satellite offices on the premises, and the McMinnville Free Clinic would move in permanently. It will be a green-built, emergency, and transitional shelter with 50 to 70 apartment beds for individuals and families. And we break it down into about 30 individual apartments and about 20 family apartments. On-site facilities will include exterior handicap access, apartments for individuals and families. One of the training courses will be child daycare. Another program will be laundry. We'll have a dining hall that is also a great room that many meetings can be held at. Showers, that's an unheard-of situation here in McMinnville, other than First Baptist and Salvation Army. Those are the only two places that you can get a free shower. Computer lab will be another training course, a usable mailing address, very, very important, and a mailroom where they can also learn to use, to do the training. Usable mailing address. When a person goes out to apply for a job or send a resume, they have to have a mailing address. Or what happens at our post office is 30 days later, and they don't even know that they have the mail there, it gets thrown into the circular file. So, therefore, they can't get a job without a usable mailing address. However, as a training course, a mailroom, which lots of corporations, businesses, federal government, mailboxes express, et cetera, et cetera, all have mailrooms. And if you give them the training, then they might be able to get on at that kind of facility. Telephone and fax service is so important so that they can send out cover letters, resumes, applications, et cetera. Movie nights. I've talked to a number of people who are willing to not rent us the movies, but give them to us to allow that the participants that are staying to have a movie night, both in English and Spanish. A vegetable garden because we can train people how to do agricultural things. We have the wine area so significant, people could go to work for the wineries, the nurseries, the farms. You'd need to teach them how to amend the soil, until the soil, and plant the plants and seeds, and water it, and care for it, and weed it, and then they can get a job doing those types of things. And ample parking for everyone that is volunteering at the Compass Center, plus those that might have vehicles that are staying. Educational facility will offer free GED classes. I've talked to a number of business leaders that are willing to underwrite the GED classes. Plus, Chamekada has been giving free GED classes through the summer months that anyone that wants to sign up. Computer training, I talked about that. Job search. They can do job searches right from the Compass Center. You can tie right into the Oregon State Employment Division and see all the possible jobs available. Vocational and job interview training. Up at Hope on the Hill, they have what's called the Edge classes, and they teach people how to write resumes, and they give mock interviews until they got it down to a science, and they feel very, very good about that. And that's so important. Goal-setting classes. So many people that are living on the streets or in poverty have forgotten how to goal-set. So you teach them how to goal-set for a day, then a week, then a month, then six months, then a year. Same with budgeting. They've forgotten, because they don't have very much income, how to budget once they transition out. But you want them to have all of that information, so as they do transition out, they set up their own goals and their own budgets, and they're able to maintain them. Counseling. And arts and crafts classes. Can you imagine an exhibit of homeless art brought to our community? It would be fantastic what psychologically we would see and what we could learn. And then, in addition, the Compass Center will provide, YCAP is very interested in being the case managers for the Compass Center, and they would do a one-year follow-up every three months and go out and check on those who transition out and make sure how they're doing, the positives and the negatives, so if there's any problems that we can offset that and move forward. Office spaces, as I said before, for all service providers and ministries that want a satellite office. It really helps because, let's say that you're in arrears with McMinnville Water and Light, and it's $400, and your electricity and water is about to be shut off. So right now, we send them to YCAP. They might get $100 from YCAP. Then we send them to Salvation Army to see what's available there, then to St. Vincent de Paul, and then to Cooperative Ministries, to the Community Compassion Fund, or other places. And it takes days, and all of a sudden, their electricity's turned off, and they have three out of the four checks available, but they can't quite make it. If you had it all in one place, you're talking about talking over a cubicle in 15 minutes. Everything would be taken care of. The Medical Free Clinic would have a permanent residence and be able to be open more than First and Second, First and Third Saturdays. It would also have an interior and exterior play area for the kids, and an exterior basketball half-court in the parking lot, so people that are volunteering or staying there would have a way to go off, out, and blow off some steam and also get some exercise. So this is the concept of what it might look like from an overhead view. You pull into the parking lot, and the main structure is straight ahead. To the perimeter are 21 tiny houses. And I've already talked to a tiny house manufacturer here in town, and I meet with them on Sunday. And they build them so that they have solar panels built into them, so it's off-the-grid, that has water available to it. They can be anywhere from 150 to 300 square feet for individuals and families that are transitioning out of a situation and are either coming in or going out of the Compass Center after all of their training. All of this costs money, about $3.1 million, and that's without the tiny houses. But we have some ideas to raise the money for the tiny houses through different businesses that might sponsor each of the tiny houses with a plaque on each tiny house of who sponsored that little tiny house. So, the Compass Center in a snapshot. A culture of compassion, a community of care. Shelter, job training, free medical clinic, daycare, nutrition, garden-to-table, and mental health. We have all the right service provisions, including NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, which resides here in McMinnville. And there are a lot of people that really can help out those people that are mentally hurting. I have a steering committee, and I'm putting a board together because we filed for our incorporation. Our 501(c)(3) should be done within the next 90 to 120 days, and then we will start fundraising through grants and other things. So right now, on the steering committee is myself, Nise Delzel, my life partner, Elise Huey from the Housing Authority, Don Booker from Salvation Army Advisory Council, and the Compass Center, Jay Jagger from the Housing Authority, Rosaline Stone, who's a psychologist here in town, Larry Sims, retired Lynnfield College Board of Trustees, Denise Burnt from St. Vincent de Paul, Kathy Long from St. Barnabas Soup Kitchen Cooperative Ministry Saturday Morning Breakfast, Ted Ewan, co-pastor at McMinnville Covenant Church and the McMinnville Free Clinic, Mark Peterson, former pastor at Cooperative Ministries, dealing with the Community Compassion Fund, the Chaplain's Pantry, Austin Dozier, who is a building contractor and construction engineer. So in the short term, what we're seeking is ordinance changes and the tiny house village. So what we need to do is figure out a way to purchase that land and get the tiny house village put on, and then build the Compass Center in the center as we get the money through the grant process. Midterm expansion of the Yamhill County Gospel Rescue Mission is underway. They're seeking three plots of land next to them. When they do get it, they're going to put on a mobile home for 17 additional beds for men, and the house will become 17 beds for women and children. Also, through Dave Hagerberg and all of the people that are working so diligently over there, they're planning on bringing in a modular home that will allow for emergency housing for 35 people, not just through the winter. But it won't be full-time. It'll be from 5:00 p.m. till 8:00 a.m. the next morning, and then those people will be released to the streets again. I have to do this mantra of "housing first, affordable housing." It's the way to stabilize everything that we can do to help the people that are on the streets and those that are suffering from not having shelter. Housing first is the very best scenario. It costs a lot of money. In the long term, the Compass Center and other situations like the Compass Center can be built to assist those that are in need. And even all of this will not completely fix the problem. However, Jesus did say, "The poor will always be with us." And that is true. In some condition or another, the poor will always be with us. But we can do our very, very best to change that condition to the best possible percentage people that need the help. We have social service providers, ministries, nonprofits, and businesses that all can work in collaboration. As I spoke before, YCAP is very interested in the case management and possibly the food, and they do energy help. St. Vincent de Paul does food and energy help and rental assistance. The Community Compassion Fund at the Cooperative Ministries does all of those things. Provoking hope is recovery for those that are addicted, whether it be to alcohol or drugs. Project Able and Champion teams are peer-to-peer support groups. Alcoholics Anonymous and Narcotics Anonymous help those that need support to get together for alcohol and narcotic situations where they can talk and be proactive together, which helps. I talked about NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, with mental health assistance for families of those and the persons who are going through it. Hope on the Hill. Hope on the Hill, I talked about the Edge classes for job resumes, applications, mock interviews, and much more. The Housing Authority, Ready to Rent classes, Section 8 vouchers, affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. Insight, formerly called Job Growers, which is innovative workforce solutions for vocational training. WorkSource Oregon for job seekers and vocational training and employment. McMinnville Habitat for Humanity. They can only do so many houses in a year, but affordable housing. Community Home Builders, affordable housing. Roots Solutions, remembering our obligation to sustainability. They build the tiny houses. And many other people that want to do something to offset this condition. So I thank you all so much for listening to my presentation. I realize that I took up a lot of time. And Mayor, I thank you for re-listening to it all, because I did this presentation for Walnut City, Kiwanis, just a month ago or so. But I thank you all for listening very much.
Thank you. Stay there for a minute, Howie. Any comments, questions from the council? Let's start with you.
Thank you, Howie. That was a really comprehensive program you've come up with.
I think it's the only way to offset the situation. And it really is being done throughout the country in many states. They don't all have medical-free clinics built into them, but they have some of these other things that are working extremely successfully.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions that came into my mind. And the children pulls at my heartstrings for sure, as probably most people. But did you say? Did you say that you have your eye on a piece of property?
Yes, we do.
And where's that located?
It's on West Second. It's part of Salvation Army. It used to be the community garden.
Oh, yeah.
They are offering two acres up out of the three acres that they have. We don't know what the cost is yet. But I found out through Brenda Freese, who is the envoy, through her channels, that they are willing to sell two of the acres.
Yeah, and then just briefly, I don't want to take up everybody's time, but as far as the changing of the ordinances, it's going to take some, quite a bit of massage.
Preparation, yeah.
Re-establishing different ordinances, for sure, to encompass this project.
Perfect term.
Thank you.
Remy.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was actually, that was the same question that I had. So thank you very much for all your work.
Scott.
Howie, again, you have taken loads of information and put it down in a kind of user-friendly approach, and we appreciate that. As you've mentioned, it's going to take partnership, partnership, partnership. You've got to have, as you've indicated, you've got to have a passion for it. You've got to understand the problem. Number two, the money.
Yes.
You need to have the volunteers. It all has to come together, and it doesn't come from one source. And so I really appreciate the very in-summing of the partners that are out there. But we just need to, including the city, be a partner at the table so that we can provide the assistance that we can provide.
Yes.
We can't do it all.
No one entity can, Scott.
Correct. But it's that partnership. And within the county, we've seen multiple years of where we started the process. But there's a need to accelerate going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go down to you, Larry.
Yes, that's great information, and I really appreciate you taking the lead and researching this out and bringing the agencies together, because we need to get the ball rolling. And I know it feels like it's rolling, but we've got to keep it going and get more people involved. I think the resources are out there, like you believe. I believe that the community supports there. I believe that the partnerships are there. But we've got to get them all on the same page.
Got to keep the momentum moving.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you again, Howie. I thought your whole proposal was very interesting and well-thought-out. I think I see a positive movement here this year. I mean, we didn't stop talking about it in the spring. We continued it through the spring and summer with, so I do feel like we're building momentum. The city in particular has, I think, stepped up and tried to convey this so people can kind of see the continuity and what needs to happen. So there's a lot of positive that's happening now. But thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Kelly.
Kevin.
Again, thank you for the work you've done. Very, very in-depth. I suffer from a cold, so I feel like I'm a little brain fogged right now. But I guess the question I have is, could you give us an idea of how we would be able to respond to the possibility of this siphoning off homeless from other parts of the state? If this is a successful unit, which clearly is designed to be successful, how we could manage that?
Well, I believe that once we can show successes, that there are communities throughout, not only Oregon, but across the nation, that could utilize this very type of model. Sustainability, we're going to have to do some capital campaign. We're going to have to do a lot of fundraising to be able to pay the costs of certain individuals that will have to be full-time positions.
Yeah, and then the other, I guess it's a comment. I really love the idea. You know, before, I used to teach social studies, and so, you know, studying poor farms and the Great Depression and things like that. This isn't a new idea. It's just a really good idea, like magnified. And so it's interesting to see it kind of come around again, back before poor farms, you know.
I know.
Decided to close them, and let's, everything used to be county-based. But then Social Security and Medicare, I was supposed to fix everything. So it's not. And so it's great to see these groups get together and come up with a solution. And I think if I had, my only concern is I think two acres isn't going to be enough.
I'd love for it to be more.
But I think we could start small, and we can build, and we can do it. And I'm just really excited for how much we can get done. I remember, was it a year or two years ago, you pitched this idea to us? And the amount of effort it must have taken to get all these people to the table and to come up with this great steering committee of all these people who are willing to commit to this, it's just fantastic. And you should be very proud of what you've done. And I'm certainly proud of McMinnville for coming to the table and making this. I'm not talking about McMinnville, the city. I'm talking about the people of McMinnville who are willing to take part in this, because it's, like you said earlier, everyone has to do their part.
That's right.
And it's just, it's really humbling to see the, I don't know, the charity that we're seeing. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Just a couple of closing comments. Again, I'd like to thank you. Howie, I think I might have shared this with you at one of the Kiwanis Club meetings. I'm not so sure. At my age, I'm not so sure who I share what with, who, you know. But anyway, we say things happen for a reason. I was able to retire from a very successful career at Oregon Mutual after 35 years and thought I was ready for retirement. Turned out, I wasn't ready for retirement. So fortunately, I was able to obtain a job. They contacted me and went to work for head start of Yamhill County as administrator of the transportation system, working with the bus fleet and the drivers and the kids and the teachers. Well, as part of that, some people may say I was uneducated. I kind of really, I have to admit that before that happened, I'd basically say, as far as the homeless go and poverty, I was ignorant, and I don't mind saying that as a citizen. Through that whole process, I was able to attend several classes at the Oregon Poverty Institute at Portland State. And had several meetings and classes with Dr. Donna Beagle. And I know many of you know who Dr. Beagle is. And what it taught me is a total different perspective on life. So as people address the council about getting on our goals, I had a much better understanding why people in poverty, why people that are homeless, why they do what they do. So it's probably the best thing that ever happened to me. I believe McMinnville is the kind of city, if I were looking back at 1969, for those residents that were here, or these people that were here in 1969, we went through a same issue with all of our lumber mills closing down. And a group of businessmen got together and organizations and started a program called Nine for 69, which is to bring in nine new industries in the year 1969. They ended up bringing in 11 new industries.
Fantastic.
McMinnville was named by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce that year as Oregon's pace-seter city for industrial development, which basically means, people don't realize this, but McMinnville is the home of economic development for the state of Oregon. And you look at, in those years where our economic development has gotten out with McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, it takes a while, but with the work you're doing, Howie, and the work others are doing, and the teamwork and everything, I liken this to where we were then.
Yes.
The citizens of McMinnville can make anything happen we want to happen.
That's right.
And I think we have the infrastructure in place. We have the management in place. We have the council in place. We have the nonprofits in place. We have the businesses in place. Now, you're right, we need to escalate it and just make it happen. I'm a firm believer that city government or any government is not the answer. The answer is to ensure that cities play a vital role and partner with the other organizations, because it's not a city issue. It's a community.
That's right.
It's a community issue. And with all those now in place, I think we're going to succeed big time. And I just hope you find some time to enjoy some of your retirement.
I am.
You have a passion for this.
I'm going fishing on Saturday.
But you'll be back at work on Sunday. I know how that goes. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next thing, business, we have another short presentation, and from Henderson House on their expansion project. Sabina, there she is, right there. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself and what you're going to talk to us about tonight?
Yeah, my name is Sabina Falkwest. I'm the executive director for Henderson House. It'll be one year end of next month that I've been doing this, so fairly new. Kind of running late, so I was going to just do the 101 version. I run this?
A lot of us are the ones that need help, Rob.
Let me rephrase that. Not with this, but lots of other things. Let's see. There we go. Now it'll come better. Is there a way to make it? Oh, here we go, slideshow. We were established in 1981, and we were founded by Mary Henderson, who unfortunately passed away this year. But she's left a phenomenal legacy, and we work every day to continue that on behalf of her. We operate two facilities. We have the shelter, and we also have an advocacy center. The shelter was established in 1991 in a partnership with the city. And the advocacy center with all of the office was established in 2003. That's weird. We currently offer, we're providing domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and dating violence services. And we offer primary advocacy, which is engaging with somebody, their family, hopefully on the front end as soon as possible, to carry them through and support them all the way through the process, whatever that looks like. But for us, it's to get them healthy and whole, and contributing members of our community. And the children are going to the same school and all those things. We offer bilingual advocacy, the confidential shelter, support groups, a 24-hour crisis line prevention outreach, and community education. Those are the foundational pieces of what we do right now, based on domestic violence, based on sexual assault primarily. Where I'm wanting to move this, and we've started implementing some of these pieces, is we're partnering with the PD on You Have Options program, which is a sexual assault response. I feel very fortunate that I was able to start at the time I did and invited to join the police department on a victim-centered approach. So we're very excited about that. Would like to move from 30-day emergency shelter to more transitional housing. It's definitely an issue. 30 days is not enough time to really allow people to get rooted and even get started from the trauma that they've been going through. So we're implementing an economic empowerment program that's kind of parallel with the educational program. That's going to teach our clients how to stretch the money that they do have. So they'll learn how to coupon. They'll learn how to prepare meals that are bulk. They'll learn how to can, all these different things that can really help them stretch the dollar, whether it be assistance or money that they're making through employment. The Latina program, that's really going to be focusing in the fields. We hear reports of sexual assaults happening in the fields, and we're not getting people coming in for services. So we're going to really do some outreach in that. And then healthy teens prevention type of things. I do want to add a caveat to all of this. I have been aware of the Compass Center for, well, since I started. It's an amazing concept. It has all this great, I've seen that model work in other communities. And what I do want to say is, I'm very transparent upfront. We are funded through federal funds, and we are bound by the Violence Against Women Act. It's called the VAWA Act. To confidentiality without discretion, which then requires us to not, we wouldn't be able to participate in the level with partnering. What we could do is a co-located position. We could do some things, but our, it's very stringent. We are extremely bound by confidentiality. So I'm hoping that we can change that to with discretion. That's my side note, soapbox. We're really in the process of developing partnerships so that we can implement our programmatic approach. So within those programs, we're still going to do the advocacy. It's just going to be specialized. So if we're working with Department of Human Services, the advocates that engage based on the domestic violence or sexual assault are going to be skilled in that. But then they're also going to bring in other people who are specialized in teaching a mother of three how to stretch her monthly assistance to be able to acquire more. And also, it will contribute to our economy. So that's a whole nother presentation. This is kind of dry. Last year, we were running a 472,000 budget. We get our money mostly through grants, which my goal is to really diversify that. So I've been applying for some foundation funds and strategizing how to get more donations and just kind of diversify it. We're trending pretty close to last year. Last year, we provided over 2,200 shelter nights. The only thing that we're not trending to, and I'm actually driving this, is reduction of restraining orders. For some reason, it became a numbers thing through Henderson House to get restraining orders, and people were actually going to the courthouse and asking people if they needed one. And that just doesn't do justice here, and it's not good for our court system. It's not good for the validity of a restraining order. So as you can see, we've gone from 257 last year down to 90. And our restraining orders are, they're more valid. We're getting more of them granted, and we're getting more of them that are sustaining with people not trying to get rid of them after three days. That's another presentation. Um, this is Sean and she's given me permission to share a little bit about her. She is our current shelter advocate. Um, she came here seven years ago and she was actually, um, pretty, pretty badly beaten up. She transitioned into our shelter and, um, spent time trying to figure out what she wanted to do. She decided to stay in McMinnville and so for the last seven to eight years, she's been volunteering, uh, you know, really got involved in a lot of resources and utilized those resources. And so her whole family's here now. She's a full-time staff person with us and she's having a very, very good success rate with women and families getting sustainable housing within 30 days, which really blows my mind. But she's the one who knows who works there, when they take their potty break, probably their cellphone number. You know, she really has access to all the resources and she engages people. So we're really pleased with the transition into sustainable housing and long-term, uh, you know, stability. And she's awesome. We do a lot of community engagement. We're working really hard to, um, just get out in front of people and let them know we're here. That top corner picture, we just completed that last week. We're pretty excited. We decided to reduce the number of rooms for beds because it was really crowded in there and open up a playroom for the kids so that they can play and we have volunteers who watch them and then the women can go and cook and resource, you know, look for jobs and do things and have respite. Um, most of the time, the kids are at their hips. So we're really excited and it just turned out really cute. Um, ways people can help, just fairly simply is they can sign on to Community Awards, Fred Meyer's or Amazon and it really just takes about five minutes. Um, we're working towards a vision of empowering victims and their families to overcome trauma and thrive in a thriving community. And I just really appreciate you allowing me the time to do a quick presentation on what we're doing. You're going to see us pop up a lot more. Um, I, people are joking, but, um, I've been working with DHS on, we have a co-located advocate and we're working on truly empowering mostly women and children, but we serve men too, um, how to go to school and how to, how to, how to budget, how to organize, how to plan, how to access resources. And we're partnering with people nationally and locally to hopefully offer up, you know, a few individuals in the next year or two who will actually get paid and make money to go to school, um, by stretching their dollars and de- demonstrating that they really have drive and passion to do that. So we're pretty excited. And that's all I have.
Let's start with any quest- questions. Larry?
I have no questions.
Hillary?
Thank you for your presentation. I, it's been a while since I've heard all of what you offer and it seems like you've really expanded your program. So, thank you. Good luck to you on this.
Kevin?
Thanks for all you do.
Hey Scott?
Again, thank you. Um, we appreciate as a council, hearing success stories. And the Henderson House is a success story that's been around us for a long time and it sounds like you're even growing to higher heights. So thank you.
Thanks. Remy?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
And Alan?
And thank you again. Uh, I'm somewhat familiar and, uh, with Henderson House. Um, but it would be nice to get a more in-depth report, as you'd like to do, on some of these, these issues that have come up and give you a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Again, thank you. You know, as I, we listened to your presentation and listened to the presentation, how he gave, um, a lot of citizens will talk about life McMinnville style or living life McMinnville style and don't really understand what it is. I think tonight was a good example of what it is and I think government really starts at home. And I think, um, if we could take some of our meetings and meetings of some of the other small cities and send them up to the powers to be and say, this is how government and the community should work together, we'd all be, we'd probably all be better off. But I've been in McMinnville since 1957. Uh, and to tell you the truth, I've never thought about moving and I never will think about, uh, I'd like to go someplace that's warmer, of course, but this summer, we haven't had to worry about that issue. But again, Sabina, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, that takes us to new business council. Right now, I do have one item of business we will, uh, talk about and then we'll see.
And Mayor, I have another one to bring up.
Okay, Scott. Um, the Yamhill County has re, is in the process of reactivating their Transportation Committee, which is a group of local governments and citizens that are working together to review the transportation program for Yamhill County. McMinnville has always had a liaison to that committee, a member of that committee. Uh, committee hasn't met for a few years. Now they're getting it back together and I would, by consensus, if it's all right, I would like to appoint, uh, Councilor Yoder back to the, uh, who served on before, back to the transfer, uh, Yamhill County Transportation Committee. So if I don't hear any objections, we'll go ahead and, I guess Larry, you're it.
Okay.
Yeah, you are okay with it, aren't you Larry? Yeah. You're retired now, so, yeah. Okay. And Scott, you said you had an ad item?
Uh, yes. Um, during our dinner meeting, Mayor, we talked a little bit about with the departure of our beloved, uh, city attorney, uh, that interim period and we're taking applications right now. We'll be doing some interviewing to, to replace Candace. Uh, we have an engagement letter that came before us, uh, to have, um, legal services provided in, in Candace's absence from, uh, Walt Gao and, uh, Hogelberg, Ruder, Ga- Gao. And so I just bring that up before us because I think we need to have a consensus to move forward to engage them.
Okay. And again, council, this is a per- personal services agreement, so it is, does not fall under state contracting laws and we discussed this a little bit. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to give, uh, the city manager, uh, permission to go ahead and confirm that with, uh, with Walt Gao at Hogelberg Stone, Ruder and, Ruder and Gao to act on behalf of the city of McMinnville, attend our, attend our council meetings in Candace's place.
Could Candace, for the record, make a point of clarification about?
Yes.
Your authority to do this?
Sure.
Candace?
Um, actually, public, thank you. Um, public or, uh, personal services contracts do come under the, the public contracting law and we are doing all of this contracting under.
I mean, they fall under public contract law, but we're not required to go out for bids or.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Candace.
Thanks, Council President Jeffries. It's well appreciated.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think so. Martha, I think you can go ahead and move forward and with using all of your, perhaps, I, I think she's got everything so well. I don't know how many hours it's going to take for her to train.
I think he's going to be bored.
Yeah. Or he's going to find out how much time it takes and decide not want to do it. But just for those of you that, Walt Gao also represents other, he's a city attorney part-time for other cities in Yamhill County. So he's well-versed in municipal, uh, law. So we are getting somebody in luckily locally that is, is, knows municipal law very well.
Um, how long do we think this, this will run? Do you have an idea for that?
You know, we were, originally, we talked about through November. Um, we did have one of the candidates today that, uh, told us that he's going to be on track for his current job until January. So once you find that right applicant, uh, we'll have to start the conversation then of when that applicant can get here.
We've already started the recruitment for that, right?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Good question, Kevin. Thank you very much. Thank you for having that, and that new business, Scott. Uh, that will take us down to resolutions. We do have one resolution that's 201541 and that's a resolution accepting a grant offer and authorizing the city manager to exchange agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the airport improvement project. So Michael, I think you're going to cover that or, that's yours, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'd refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet as well as the resolution, the grant letter from FAA, the grant agreement and a brief project data sheet. This is the second of many FAA grants that we expect in association with the Runway Rehab Project. The council will recall that that project will be funded 90% with federal funds and the 10% match will be funded through a Connect Oregon Five grant that the city obtained from the state. So unless there are any questions, I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution, uh, authorizing the city manager to sign the grant agreement in the amount of $492,230.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
So move by Councilor Mankey. Do I have a second?
Second?
Uh, second by Councilor Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 40, 2015 dash 41 passed the council unanimously with all members present. Thank you, council. That'll take us into advice and information items. Due to, uh, the hour, we will, uh, dispense a report from counselors on committee and board assignments unless anybody has really anything burning to bring up. Kevin?
Uh, a couple of weeks back, we issued a noise permit for the races. That was going on this, this last weekend. Um, I, I seriously doubt that they met the, the decibel, stayed within decibel levels. I was at, um, Wortman Park, which is far away from the, from the track. And I could, I, it was so noisy, I could hardly keep a conversation with the person next to me. So I think if they were to come back again, I would, I would, uh, I would seriously call to question their, 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 their decibel levels because it was outrageously loud.
Do they have a decibel, do they use a decibel meter or do you know?
They said they did when they did the testing out at, across the street, at, you know, there's those apartments by Safeway.
Right.
And, uh, I, it was, there's no way on this earth that they stayed within their, their limits.
Because I know I was at the airport for about three hours listening.
Wasn't the airport, it was the.
Oh, Drag the Gut test?
No, it was the race, their little go-kart.
Oh, the go-kart race.
The Portland Karting Race Association.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was pretty insane.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement. So if they do come back to us, maybe, it's not that we don't want them, but we will have to set some more.
Adam has his hand up.
Well, they need to live up to their karting association.
Yeah, just a minute.
Adam?
Adam, I guess you can talk now. We're in informal session, so you can talk.
Just to clarify, if it was this last weekend, Kevin?
Saturday, yeah.
It wasn't Portland Karting Association. They raced at Paddock, here this last weekend and it was a night race, it can't be. So whoever was racing out there, wasn't the same people that presented a month ago?
Thank you.
Who was racing at the county out here at the track again, Adam?
I don't know who was racing this weekend, but I know it wasn't the young, young unit that was running.
The karting association, because they're not scheduled until September sometime?
Thank you.
It's September sometime and my computer's locked up. I can't find the date.
Other than their normal racing.
Other than their normal racing, yeah. I'd be interested.
We should find out who's out there because man.
Because they didn't have, they didn't ask for a noise permit, whatever it was.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Garvin.
I retract my comments.
Okay, so your comments are.
With a caveat that we should find out who's out there making all that noise.
But it was a good comment anyway. I guess we'll find out who it was.
Better sure put a damper on the.
Anybody else have anything to bring up? The only I will bring up is to keep everybody informed is if, uh, you've been keeping up on ODOT's website lately. The, um, the bypass is going well. They're doing the final surfacing, getting ready to put down gravel and paving. Part of it, nine bridges, um, yeah, nine bridges are done. Uh, and then we also, you'll notice in the item, there is the Wings and Waves, uh, Information, Recreation, Education Foundation Extension on Property Tax. That has been pulled and that's why it is now under the Advice and Information, uh, Items. Martha, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, um, the package has not been pulled by Evergreen. Um, it's a discussion of, after we looked, they had a request to extend the time frame for them to develop a package to show the value of the Wings and Wave Park and why that would justify a tax-exempt, um, ruling from the council. They ran out of time. They would like some more time. We actually looked into it and, uh, council, Candace did some really extensive research. We can't find a provision to give them a, a time extension. So it's not really necessarily up for a vote. We can't, we can't give them the extension.
That's, so they would have to come in front of us with a whole new proposal.
Yes, and so there's, and there's a 60-day time limit. So that 60-day means that they'll have to come back to us now with the original date of September 8th. And Candace will pass it over to you if, uh, there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, just to let you know that they're aware of that and, and they concur. So they will be before you September 8th.
Okay, as I started mentioning, the bypass now is really undergoing a lot of construction. I think they have five bridges done, uh, that are in the fence of either having fencing put on or everything. The Eighth Street Bridge and the Four Courts Quarry Bridge are complete, or Road Bridge are completely done. Uh, they just need to pave and put those sections in. But they expect that here, within the next 45 days, we will see some pretty extensive traffic delays, hopefully all at night through Dundee as they lift the big, uh, beams across, across the highway in Dundee. And those are some pretty massive, massive beams. So they have everything scheduled for night, but you know, there's always else that fails. That being said, also in your packet, there was the department head reports and Martha talked a little bit about the Wings and Waves Recreation Education Foundation. And there was also the City of McMinnville Building Division Report. So let's go around. Michael, do you have anything we should be aware of? None. Rose?
No.
How about Matt? Nice to see you stayed for the whole meeting, Chief. We really appreciate it. Not like your, not like your counterpart. Yeah, not like your counterpart. Okay, Candace, do you have anything?
Well, with Councilor Hill's help, I finally managed to get my computer to unfreeze.
Did he just re-hit the reset button?
And, and, no, he did all kinds of magic. But Portland Karting's noise permit is for September 19th. So, um, Council Jeffries, if you want me to, I'll follow up tomorrow and find out who was there Saturday.
Saturday, uh, 2:00.
Yeah, can you, who's in, who's the commissioner? Stan Primisich is the commissioner in charge of the fairgrounds. So he could probably tell you, Laura could probably tell you, or whoever, Chris.
We'll, we'll look into it and.
I'd be interested in knowing that too. Okay, anything else come in front of the council? Martha, you have any parting notes?
One quick thing. We had a momentous, uh, event yesterday and that was the fully funding of our Visit McMinnville. So right there, that just shows you, nothing really happens until the finance guys make it happen. So Finance Director is passing on to the Treasury a check for $402,000 from our hotel lodging taxes. And so Visit McMinnville is now funded.
And so Martha, just to update a little bit, we have met twice in this last week to do interviews for Executive Director. We're holding off quite a bit of things to have an, an Executive Director hired to be driving that process. I'll tell you, this is a committee that is going about 300 miles an hour and it hasn't blown the engine yet. So, no fires.
Well, it's good to have them have that money in their treasury now so they can start doing, moving forward with some plans. Okay, nothing else, Martha? Nope. Meeting adjourned.
You can really do a lot with that much money.